Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing at six o'clock and we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. I think our agenda is set and we're gonna do the presentations. We've got Mark Massey here to present to us.
I don't know where you want me to stand, but uh.
Right there.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for having me come in.
Uh, I'm here tonight to talk about the exciting topic of real property tax law uh, as it relates to solar energy systems uh, in New York State. Um, so. I think it's on slideshow. So, at any rate, there is a real property tax code section four hundred and eighty-seven uh, which New York State put into place, uh, which basically allows for a fifteen-year real property tax exemption on uh, any increase in value related to the installation of uh, solar and wind projects. So, what all municipalities, school districts right now, um, yeah, he'll go, go to the next one there, number two. There we go. So, all municipalities, school districts and everybody in our.
Rob, can you enlarge that a little?
If we can go to present a little bit, I'm afraid it's gonna advance if you set the slides.
That's what I think, that's what happened.
Well, that's just a, I know how to get out of it if it doesn't. Are they set to auto advance?
It looks like it could.
Okay.
So, all municipalities and school districts are de facto opted in, which means that anybody who was to construct a solar or wind energy system would be tax exempt by default. Uh, you can, what's called opt-out uh, by local, I'm sorry, uh, by local law and resolution, which would make the solar system fully taxable. Um, and can you make a municipal, can you make your opt-out retroactive? No, you can't. So, if there is any construction already begun um, on a project and you opt-out, the project prior to the opt-out is a non-taxable exemption. After the opt-out, wouldn't uh, be taxable. Can you reverse a previous local law? So, if you decide to opt-out, you could reverse it and opt back in again later on. If you remain opted in, you can require a pilot. What is required to happen is a company has to send you notice, the school district that says, "We are constructing a project." The school district would then have to reply to them, "We wish to require a pilot," and then the school district would have to negotiate and do the documents for the pilot.
Mark, I'm sorry, did you say if you are opted out, you may request a pilot?
If you are opted in, the school district itself can request a pilot upon notification from the company.
Okay.
But, um, there is some confusion over what deems notification, um, and who they would notify at the school district. So, there is a risk that they could notify somebody, nothing happens, and it could get through as tax exempt if you remained opted in.
So, you're saying you could opt-in and be taxed, get taxed and a pilot vote?
So, if you are opted in, you are tax exempt. But the project is required to notify the school district, at which point the school district could require a pilot under the opt-in uh, election. If you opt-out, it is fully taxable. IDAs such as the Genesee County Industrial Development Agency can offer a pilot to a company. So, in that particular case, because you have opted out, they would definitely come to get a pilot because the full taxation with the way these things are across the state, there's real no set value and it's kind of really across the board. So, they would pursue a pilot so they could at least get a fixed dollar amount and know what they would pay. I can tell you that Genesee County has opted out. So, any solar project that happens in Genesee County will have to come to us for a pilot, at least for the county portion. So, if you can go to the next one. So, again, with the notification and the trigger of that is when they get the uh, signed utility interconnection agreement with National Grid is the legal notice for the company to send notification to the school. Again, who, there's no real specification as to who they're supposed to notify. So, they could notify the head of a department, they could notify a teacher. It's kind of up in the air and then if that slips through, you've kind of missed your opportunity. So, and then you also have a sixty-day window after receiving notification if you remain opted in, to require them to do a pilot. So, if you opt-out, all solar installations, including rooftop units on houses, become taxable. I've talked to both the town of Oakfield and the town of Batavia Assessor, who have said that they would not plan on increasing any assessments on homes for rooftop solar units that are on the homes. They don't feel like at this point the technology does enough to increase the value of the homes. But, they did say, you know, they do reserve the right that if technology gets better, that's a possibility. They also stated that any acreage that is leased under the solar project agreement would not be eligible for the ag exemption. So, if there is farmland that is currently in the ag districts that is getting an ag exemption, if they do a solar project on it, that property would lose the ag exemption.
Mark, can I ask this?
Sure.
Is that the prerogative of the tax assessors or isn't that an ag and market thing? That once you convert ag land to a solar farm, it's considered a permanent conversion and they don't, it's automatically out?
I don't know if they consider it a permanent conversion because I think they take the stance that you can remove the panels and revert it back to farmland. But the assessors I've spoken to said that they would not be eligible for the ag exemption because I don't think it can be in a farming district if they're not farming.
My understanding is that the ag and markets consider it a permanent conversion and takeaway. So, I just want to.
Either way, they would lose the exemption.
Right, okay.
Correct. So, Genesee County has opted out, town of Pembroke, town of Darien has opted out, uh, Byram, Virgin, Pembroke, Alexander, Attica, Alden have opted out. Uh, Elbow, we discussed with them, they actually did opt-out as well. The town of Alabama is currently discussing whether they would wanna pursue their own pilot or opt-out. They'll probably make their decision at the December-January meeting. Um, I know there was a sample resolution um, that was given to you. Um, I looked at that, there was a reference to onsite or on-farm site digesters, that is incorrect. Um, we did seek clarification from our legal counsel. Uh, digesters were actually in two thousand and sixteen were carved out of section four eighty-seven and have their own exemption under uh, real property tax law, section four eighty-three A. So, if you do choose to uh, approve the resolution to opt-out, I would recommend that you strike the language referring to uh, on-farm digesters and just opt-out in relation to solar uh, and wind systems. But I did confirm with our legal firm that digesters were carved out and have their own real property tax exemption, they're not affected by this opt-out. And we are seeing um, a large number of solar projects at least having interest. There are at least two uh, in the Oakfield School District that uh, have spoken with us, that are looking at doing projects that vary in size. Um, some of them are still probably uh, maybe a year out from construction, maybe two years out from construction to get their approvals. Um, but, you know, most of these school districts reacted uh, based upon projects that were looking in their districts and they chose to opt-out uh, to try and do that. So, when a pilot does get put in place under the opt-out, uh, any monies that are collected are then allocated to taxing jurisdictions on a percentage of that taxing juris taxes to the total taxes. So, in most cases, the school districts are probably sixty percent of the total tax when you added school district county and the local municipality, the town. So, whatever pilot is paid, the school would then get their proportionate share of that pilot payment, whether it's sixty percent, fifty percent, however that works out.
Do you have enough experience yet, has there been enough in Genesee County to know whether a taxing jurisdiction would get more, if they taxed it directly or if they got their share of the pilot?
I don't know if we've known that. What we have found out is, uh, so there's been one project out on Bank Street Road, uh, right by the thruway. That was the one that kind of got in that everybody, nobody knew about. They weren't, didn't notify anybody. That's what caused the county to opt-out because they didn't wanna deal with, with companies slipping through again. We did do another one, um, out on Pearl Street Road, uh, in uh, Batavia-Cork, not Batavia. And in our conversations with the solar companies, they have a model that they know what their profit is and they know what the dollar amount they wanna pay is. So, the total pie is gonna be the total. So, whether one municipality ends up getting more than another because they wanna negotiate directly, I don't know if that's gonna cause friction between taxing jurisdictions. So, if a company says for our project, we have, let's say, eleven thousand dollars a year we can pay in property tax equivalents under a pilot. We don't care who it goes to, but we're only gonna pay eleven thousand total. So, you could have a local municipality negotiate five and now there's not enough for somebody else and now you've got municipalities potentially arguing with each other. It's gonna vary based on size and scope of project. So, the two projects we did approve, uh, were two, two megawatt projects each. So, we did uh, fifty-five hundred dollars a megawatt for fifteen years with a two percent escalator each year. So, it was eleven thousand dollars a year and that was allocated amongst all three of the taxing jurisdictions, except for the town of Batavia, who has remained opted in. So, if the town of Batavia remained opted in, they're not included in that pilot divvying up. So, really then it's just split between the county and the school district.
So, did they do their own separate agreement?
They wanted to remain uh, friendly for solar systems, so they aren't requiring pilots and they were gonna allow them to be taxed again for town tax purposes. But most everybody else we've spoken to that has active projects in their area have decided to opt-out.
And is that solely because they, I know we've, we've discussed this, but for everybody else? Because they could notify the elementary secretary who's like, mm, okay, well, I don't know what I'm supposed to do with that information, writes it on a post-it note, leaves it to somebody and then that doesn't come to fruition?
Yes, and then the other possibility too is that, um, then the district would have to draft their own pilot agreements. And I don't know if your legal firm is equipped to do that. You'd have to file the pilot agreements, follow up on them, bill them, pay them. When we do the pilot agreements, the company basically pays for those fees to, to do the pilot agreements, to file the documents. We, the county and us work together to collect the funds and then distribute them out to the taxing jurisdictions when we give them in.
How'd you determine the fifty-five hundred dollars per megawatt? How do you come up with your number?
So, we had done a lot of research based on what was out there, uh, and based on the operating profit, so to speak, uh, for a two-megawatt project. That was kind of, um, the number that worked for the company where they could still do the project. Uh, if you look at NYSERTA, they have a wide range of recommendations per megawatt that go anywhere from eighteen hundred a megawatt to, I wanna say forty-eight hundred a megawatt. So, we were able to get more than what NYSERTA was recommending you should do for a pilot. But a lot of this is gonna be, um, you know, the first one in and now we've kind of based it uh, on that. So, as companies come in, we're basically telling them, "You have to show us your financials to prove to us that the number you're gonna pay us is, is the max number you can do and still make a profit." Um, and we're currently in discussions with a company now who said they can't pay that, uh, what we wanted to and we said, "Well, you've gotta prove it to us." So, we are trying to work hard to review their financials to ensure that the number that's being paid is the maximum amount that the municipalities could get without the project reaching the point where it wouldn't be viable for them.
How does the promotion or acceptance, I don't know which you would call it, of the GCE, GCEDC of solar farms? How does that go along with the comprehensive plans of the towns that are supposed to promote and preserve agriculture?
So, we would just offer the pilot. Um, any control over whether, where the project would be located and that is left to the local planning boards under a zoning, uh, the zoning ordinances and whether the planning board would approve the site plan approval of the project or not.
But aren't most of them coming in on Article ten now?
No.
So, they don't need to?
So, the two two-megawatt projects were not under Article ten. I think it's greater than ten megawatts is the Article ten threshold. Um, there's the large one out in Byram that is under Article ten. The other probably five or six projects that we've been dealing with are all underneath the threshold for Article ten. So, they have to go through the local planning board. Uh, the one project out on Galloway Road, um, is two two-megawatt projects. It's not subject to Article ten. It's going through the town of Batavia Planning and there's a lot of residence issues with that particular project that the developer is working with the town to try and address. Um, so the town does have ultimate authority over the issuance of a building permit, uh, for them to be able to do that project.
Last Friday and last night in Batavia, I was at a seminar and then last night at the Alabama Town Board Meeting, or sorry, Planning Board Meeting. And both of the companies that presented at those two places, two different companies, said that they are only pursuing Article ten projects of a scale here in Genesee County and in the town of Alabama.
So, the company, yeah, so the company in Alabama that was, that the planning board meeting last night is a very large project, is well over the Article ten threshold. I can tell you that we'd probably get notification from twenty-five different solar companies looking to do projects of varying sizes. So, it depends. The large, large projects are usually being done by very large global-type companies um, that are doing the large scale to tap onto the large three forty-five uh, bulk transmission transformer lines. Uh, the smaller ones that they call community solar projects are the two to four megawatt projects that are smaller in nature that are tacking on the national grid, which a lot of times give a lot of residences in the area two percent break on that. So, out of the projects we're dealing with that I know of, two are under the Article ten. There's a handful of probably five or six others that are not under Article ten that would be subject to local zoning and zoning board approvals.
So, for the school district of Oakfield, Alabama, would they be better off negotiating their own pilot or having you negotiate it?
I would, in your particular case, I would probably say us because based on the tax rate, you would get the biggest chunk of the payout of the total pilot anyways. And as I said, there's a finite amount of dollars that would be paid out. Uh, the chance that you would be able to get more than you would probably get under the split tax percentage, probably would be a fif, you know, wouldn't be a good percentage for you to be able to get more than what you would get under the split. Um, some of the other, you know, municipalities that have a lower tax rate might consider that because they wanna get more than their lower tax rate. But the solar projects, generally speaking, aside from the construction, don't have, um, aside from visual impact, loss of farmland. There really aren't a lot of other impacts associated with those types of projects that would create a need for additional services at a local municipal level. But since, and like I said, in most cases, the school tax portion of that equates to be sixty to seventy percent of the total tax bill, the school district by default would end up getting the larger chunk of that payment.
Are you familiar with, or do you know what, if a local municipality like the town of Alabama, the town of Oakfield, or the village of Oakfield, if they were to write in their solar laws, um, something about a host agreement, how would that affect or diminish or increase the high of the pilot?
So, again, what we've seen in other communities, there's been what's called a host benefit agreement, community benefit agreement, whatever you wanna call it. Again, you have a set amount of dollars. So, part of those dollars would be carved out for the host benefit agreement and then the rest would be split amongst the pers, uh, amongst the municipalities and the taxing jurisdictions according to their applicable tax rates and percentage they're in. So, what we have seen is in some of the other communities, it's roughly like eighty-twenty. So, twenty percent might go to a host benefit agreement, eighty percent would then go into a pilot. But each company's different, each company wants to do different things, each community's different, needs are different. It's really a case-by-case basis as you go. But in having the GCEDC be the negotiator, at least in, in corralling the pilot and then if the municipality wants to come and be a part of that, it's easier for the company because they're gonna deal with one person instead of having to deal with three independent taxing jurisdictions to do those types of negotiations.
Which would be negotiated first, the host agreement or the pilot?
They would all be done at the same time. So, again, what you would do is sit down and you would talk to the company and say, "What's your total dollar amount that you can pay?" And then you would work with the municipality and say, "Okay, what are your needs? Can we work out? How can we work out and split up this pie so it's reasonable and fair for everybody?"
So, if one of these large proposed farms comes into the town of Alabama or the town of Oakfield and they have, if in their solar laws, they have a host agreement provision, would they come, would a host agreement provision still operate under an Article ten project? Or does that depend?
I wouldn't see why it wouldn't because they would still be subject to property taxes, so they would still have to negotiate either with us or the municipality, you know, if, if everybody's opted out, they would have to negotiate with us. My understanding is all the Article ten does is handle the seeker site plan approval process that is normally done by the local planning boards, except it's gonna be done at a state level for the larger project. The real property tax piece is not affected, uh, by the Article ten process.
Has GCEDC had any experience from start all the way till finish with an Article ten project?
No, we have not. I don't know anybody. There, there isn't one in Genesee County, uh, that has gone start to finish. I don't even know if there's any in the state that have gone start to finish yet. If there are, it's probably one or two.
The town of Eagle one, is that, that's an Article ten?
Yeah, I don't know. There's probably five or six Article tens across the state right now, uh, between wind and solar, uh, that are going through very. I mean, and most of these things are, you know, the Article ten process is a two to three-year process too. So, it's not anything that happens quickly. So, essentially, the Article ten process is New York State handles the site plan approval, uh, instead of the local planning board. They have a citing board, which I think is made up of five people at the state level and I think two or three from the local level for input on that.
Mark, um, if they didn't wanna pass the resolution tonight and they wanted to put it on hold, how long would we have before you would want us to make a decision to know that?
So, uh, the one project is under site plan review, so I think you would wanna make that decision before they go to construction.
I mean, we're talking like a month or two or we're talking a year or two.
Well, it's all dependent on weather and it's dependent upon if they can, um, respond to the residents' concerns about the project and know if the town of Batavia would approve it. The other larger project is probably two to three years out because it's gonna go through the Article ten process.
Which one's under site plan review now?
The one on Galloway Road. That's been in the paper, I think, under the town of Batavia Planning Board. Uh, a bunch of, some of the residents on Galloway showed up and had some issues with visuals and things like that. So, the town was working with the company on either burning, um, trees, um, anything like that to, to, to shield the visual impact.
Is that completely in the town of Batavia or does it overlap into the town of Oakfield?
I believe it is all in the town of Batavia, but it is in the Oakfield School District.
So, if they have to shovel the ground, uh, before our next board meeting, before we're able to do anything with this, we've lost the opportunity out on that particular.
Correct.
And you, you can't really say for sure.
I, I don't know where that's at. I, and again, you know, I, it depends on what the complaints were, the issues were, the concerns for that doing that. I have seen, uh, the other solar company, Pearl Solar, they started their construction in September and were done, last September and were done in early December. So, it doesn't take long to build them. Um, they do need to have unfrozen ground because they've gotta put posts in. So, to some extent, you're stuck with the weather too and then access to the property, but.
So, you said it was visual. It sounded like the, the biggest complaint there.
From what I read in the paper, uh, people had complaints about they wanted to view the open fields, they didn't wanna view the panels, concerns over wildlife running through. So, um, if you drive down thirty-three and you look at the one that's called Pearl Solar, you can barely see it behind the trees. Uh, it's, it's probably fifty feet off of Route thirty-three, it's not very far. Uh, the tree line there covers that pretty well.
Companies will provide you with options though when they.
Yeah.
Put these in, the firms and trees.
Yes, and that's what they're working on right now is how to do that, yes. And if you look at the panels too that are over on, um, you know, Bank Street and State Street. So, I drove down State Street the other day and they still have the corn there. Um, when you came up the crest of the hill, you couldn't see the panels above the corn. So, um, you know.
Okay, any other questions for Mark? Chris, are you all right?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, thanks very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, on to approval minutes. Uh, be resolved, the minutes of the ten fifteen and ten thirty-one meetings be approved. We have a motion?
So.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Treasurer's requests? All set? All right, approve the warrants. Be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the ten nineteen, ten thirty-one, eleven fourteen warrants and internal claims. Auditor reports be approved. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Passes? Treasurer's report. Be resolved, the treasurer's report for October twenty nineteen be approved. We have a motion?
So. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Just have a brief report.
Brief today? Uh, business administrator under contact.
Okay, I just wanted to take a little time to update you. I know we talked about it last board meeting, but I just wanna let you know the changes that are gonna happen as we come on ESSA and transparency reporting, which uh, transparency is the state level per pupil report by building, basically. It boils everything down. They want to see our district by building and what we're spending on those, um, on each building. So, the other report is the ESSA reporting, that's the federal level reporting. That was decided on a couple of years ago and implemented. And now, based on our size and the number of buildings we have, we will be implementing that coming up in August of twenty twenty. So, what does that mean for our district? Well, our reports are gonna look somewhat different going forward. These budget status reports, so I kinda pulled these out, these are in the treasurer's report. So, for the, the rest of this year, we're gonna likely be looking at when we review the expenditures by function. So, the functions tells you right here, function board of ed, function district meeting. Because what we're gonna do is not necessarily for these codes, but we're gonna be looking in the twenty-one-ten codes. So, the building level codes and make, making sure those are broken out by actual building level. So, that's gonna be looking at, Donnell has a lot of codes that are not broken out by building level. So, we're gonna have to create these account codes. So, it's gonna give way more account codes in here. So, when we look at, when we look at these reports next month, they're gonna look skewed because then we have to do a bunch of budget transfers into those account codes where we're gonna pay people out of and where we're putting, um, supplies and contractual expense out of. So, that's what that all means. I'm sitting down with somebody to go through all of the accounts that we currently have because some of them are working well. Some of them we have donated, like the supply codes by, by building, but some of them we don't. So, when I look at them, I'm probably gonna try to blow up the entire thing and make sure that we're reporting everything correctly in these lines and go from there. Just because we're already doing it, we're, we're messing with the account code structure. So, let's just go through the process of making sure all of our account codes are right. Does anybody have any questions about that? Or what that looks like or what that means for us as a district? It's really joyous, so. The next thing on my, on my agenda is the long-range financial plan. Presented one last year with a memo to Mike Crum at the time, um, with, with our estimates of what it looks like in our future. I'm planning on doing that, but I need input from you, John, and of course, all of you on how we want that to look. Fund balance, the final plan on that, what we're gonna do with our reserve funds, how we think those should, should be moving forward. We approved a reserve fund policy when I started, god, three and a half years ago, roughly. We put that together, so it's gonna be re-reviewing that and then deciding where we want, what do we want it to be like in the future? So, so looking at all of those areas and then I'm gonna give you some like, kind of pretty pictures like this. This is just a fund balance based on the percentage of expense year over year from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen. You can see how that has changed. Thankfully, it's kind of following that trend. So, as our revenues have, or our expenses have increased, so have our reserve funds and thus, thus forth. So, we would never wanna see the opposite happen because that would mean we are either using more reserves and spending more money or, um, saving, spending less and having more in fund balance. So, these are all things we'll look at and discuss as we move through the long-range financial plan. Some other items that I'm planning on giving you with that are estimated, uh, student, um, student size in the district, how many students we have and looking at that and trying to be realistic about where we think we're gonna be in the next five years. Also, CPI just got updated and you know that's all critical in the tax cap calculation. They're looking at, I think, one point eight seven is gonna be the final CPI. So, that means, not that we would, but that's what the index is for us to be able to raise our taxes to, so. So, just a couple of items on my. So just a couple of items on my list that I'm working on for you as part of some of my. Anybody have any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah.
First off, I'd like to congratulate our O A E football team on their second undefeated season. And, uh, as of last Saturday, um, we all know that they won the section five championship. So congratulations to the coaches and the players, uh, for another great season. Um, two years of undefeated games is, is fantastic. Want to congratulate Zach Hall and Derek McIntyre. They represented O A, um, this past weekend in Plattsburgh for the state's, uh, cross-country meet. Um, did a phenomenal job and, and really made us proud. So congratulations to Zach and Derek. And I provided the board in front of you, um, a lot of paperwork, um, just to kind of keep you apprised of, um, the current capital project information. Um, in there is strategic planning. There is a multi-page document, um, that S E I has presented us, um, through their building condition survey of really the price of everything that they have noted, um, within the building condition survey. So really, that's just a reference for you. I provided a draft of the facilities committee's recommendations as we move forward with this. Um, if you're not aware, over the last month and a half, two months, we've had numerous, um, meetings with our facilities committee, which included administrators, teachers, myself, um, Jordan, Nicole, a lot of community members in trying to, um, come up with and kind of sift through this first phase of the capital project, um, that is coming up. So there's a, a list for the board to kind of take a look at. The timeline is we are hoping to come up with, um, a final recommendation to the board for December's board meeting. Currently, this afternoon, uh, Nicole, myself and the S E I group along with Jordan interviewed four, uh, construction companies for a construction manager, um, to assist us, you know, in the next few years with this capital project. I think you'll be happy, um, with, with the bids and the applications. So I provided you information on the four that we interviewed today. And moving forward, we'll be making a recommendation hopefully to the board in who we'd like to help assist S E I in, in moving forward. But, um, uh, just again, information for you to read. It's really all I have.
Uh, your meeting with the county, you gave us a, uh, about the center that you're looking to open up here, anything else?
Yes, I was contacted, um, as you know, um, since I've been here, we've been trying to, um, work on hopefully having a family support centers or some, you know, mental health assistance, um, with our students and our families. And, you know, in contacting the Genesee County Mental Health, uh, it's been kind of back and forth. They've gone through some administrative changes and I was notified this past week that basically we are a go. Um, they had to get some things on their end in place. And so I do have a representative coming out in December to take a look at our campus. We have an office space and a private entrance for them. So really, on our end, we're, we're a go. So that is the first step and, uh, they're excited to partner with us. Their long range goal is to have a satellite office in every district. And so, um, we're next. So I'll keep the board apprised of that, but that looks like that's, that's a go.
Any other questions for John? Okay, thank you, John. I guess we're good. Moving on to new business, um, I think the real property tax law was eight point one one. Why don't we limit consent agenda to eight point two to eight ten? And we can, uh, talk about that real property tax law separately. So. Be resolved that items eight two through eight on eight ten be approved via consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything in there anybody wants to talk about?
See, eight ten does include that veteran's exemption, so.
Eight ten does include the veteran's exemption, yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? passes? Okay, so eight one one. So Mark suggested that we remove the language of farm waste energy systems. How do we need, how do we need to open this up? We need a, we need a motion to approve. A second. And any discussion will modify that?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
And a discussion? So I think the language that Mark suggested we delete is the farm waste energy systems. As it's, uh, governed, I think, under a separate jurisdiction or tax law.
Oh, I, I have one more question to ask. So we could opt in at any other, at any time, correct? We can opt out and then we can opt back in if we decide like, hey, we don't like the way that worked out.
Correct.
We cannot back in.
You would pass another resolution that would override the opt-out.
But we can, it can't be retroactive. So if in the meantime, well, we're opted out.
Correct.
If a project starts.
They have to have a pilot.
Then that's the way it is.
Correct.
It's almost like a double negative, we're opting out of the action motion.
Uh, does anybody have any more questions or discussion? Do we want to try to move forward with this? You have any concerns anybody wants to bring up about voting on this tonight?
I guess I'm still. I want the school district to come out ahead in the best way. And I don't yet feel confident saying that opting out is our best way to do that. And I, I don't know if it can be answered. I just want to make sure we get the most money that we can out of the situation. If we get a new solar project within our school district, sounds like we're going to get at least one, right? Sure.
Okay, and are there currently companies that are looking to, to do s- these right now in this area?
Yeah.
I sure, yeah, it's a, I know we've been thought, yeah.
So the Galloway Road one is, is, is going, is moving. And then there's an article that, or.
And a company came to the Alabama Town Planning Board last night.
Right, I like, I.
A fifteen hundred acre.
I, my family personally, but the company came to us and we were ready to go and we decided to not, not do it. Uh, and I, we don't have a substantial amount of land like, you know, like some people do. I'm just curious if there's companies that have been really.
The companies are approaching everybody if they have a chunk of land.
We only have a hundred acres, so I don't feel like that's a substantial amount of land.
Oh, yeah, but they, they are looking for like thirty acre minimums, so.
If you drag this one, what, uh, sorry, do you know the size of the solar farm off of through it there? How many acres is that?
So I think the two, basically two megawatts can go on about ten acres is roughly what you're looking at. So, um, the one on Galloway Road, I think is two, uh, the, the town of Batavia has, uh, ordinance. I think you've got to be under thirty acres, um, as part of the zoning code to get that approved for their projects, their, their size. But roughly, you get about two megawatts for every ten acres.
I thought the twenty-five, the limit for Article ten was twenty-five.
I, I don't remember what it.
Or twenty-five megawatts.
Yeah, I don't remember what it is, but it is a bigger number. So most of the smaller ones are coming through.
Yeah.
The two, we've seen two megawatt projects, um, there's a couple of four megawatt projects and then there's a larger one, substantially larger, that are in the hundred to two hundred megawatt range that are going through the Article ten process. That's the one out in Byrden is one of them. I guess.
Yep.
I only know one other, I have one district that negotiates their own pilots. And I mean, I could look into it, I mean, it's up to you whether you want to pass it and then in the meantime, we'll automatically have that while I investigate the cost of that. Because of course it would cost us an amount, an amount of money and is that worth the time and energy on the district's side? Like, we have to value all of that and look at all of that. So I can do that. I don't know if you want to pass it in the meantime or you want to hold off. If this is a project that could go through soon, depending on how, um, Mark, their response is.
I can, I can just comment on the two two megawatt projects we did do in the town of Batavia. So the town of Batavia remained opted in, so they got nothing. So those are eleven thousand dollar a year annual payments. And the split between the school, the Batavia City School District, um, and the, um, county is about two thirds, one third, um, based on the tax rates. So the school district's getting two thirds of those payments, uh, and the county's getting a third. So in the case of, uh, town of Batavia, in the case of the Galloway Road project, um, I don't know what the, um, Oakfield School District rate, the tax rate is. The county tax rate's around ten, eleven bucks. So if you're double that, you're going to get two thirds of the, if you opt out, you'll get two thirds of those payments. The county will get a third and the town is remained opted in and they don't get anything. So in that particular case, in the Galloway Road project, the school district would get the majority of the money.
So when you say the county, you're referring to the county, the municipality as opposed to the G C E D C?
Correct. So the county tax rate's around ten, eleven bucks, um, per thousand. So you'd add the two rates together and then split the payment proportionally, which probably would be two thirds, one third roughly. So the school district in that case would get two thirds of the money and Genesee County would get one third for the Galloway Road project. And in the case of the Alabama project, if the town decides to try to do a host benefit agreement, I, I can't comment on that, what that would be, but their tax rate's two, three bucks. And you got the county in ten and then the school district again. So you would still end up with, uh, in a pilot payment, you would end up with over fifty, maybe close to sixty percent of the pilot payments there as well, if you opted out.
I guess I would propose of a gold form of the scenario that you're suggesting there, Nicole, of, uh, opting out and in the meantime, you could do some research and due diligence. That's where I would plan anyway. Are we okay to take a vote on this at least and?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all of those in favor of, uh, the recommended action as amended with the farm waste energy systems language struck? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opp- opposed? passes? Thank you. Communications, um, I don't know if there's anything in addition to what we've got in our spots. Discussion roundtable. I don't think anything has been submitted. Subcommittee reports, uh, anybody have anything there to report? Okay, personnel. Be resolved, items eleven two through eleven twelve be approved via consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? opposed? passes? Be resolved, the board of education enter executive session at six forty-three for the purpose of discussing employing a particular person, will we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? passes? Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.